Order. Can I get a motion for certification of closed session?
Mr. Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mrs. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Owenby. Any discussion? Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Young?
Here.
Dr. Beers?
Here.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Oh, hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you very much. 3.01, the roll, Ms. Aller?
Dr. Beers?
Here.
Ms. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Dowell?
Here.
Ms. Hummel?
Here.
Ms. Ombi?
Here.
Mrs. Young?
I am here and I want to change my answer, the last one, to aye. No, no. And Mr. Kelly?
Here. I almost said, I almost said aye. Thank you. That brings us to 3.02. Approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion for approval of the agenda as presented this evening?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Owenby. Is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Hummel. Any discussion? Ms. Aller?
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you much. 4.01, announcements and superintendent's report. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My report this evening begins with congratulations to one of our outstanding student athletes, Warhill senior Naya Ward, earned All-American status by placing third in the long and triple jump at the 2021 Adidas Indoor Track and Field Nationals. She is Warhill's first All-American in track and field. Great job, Naya. Class of 2021 is back at school and finding ways to celebrate their senior year. At Jamestown High School, that includes painting their parking spaces in the student lot. It's wonderful to see the tradition continue in spite of COVID. And finally, we know that the pandemic in school this year are stressful for many of our students. Families may be wondering how they can help reduce anxiety for their children. The Family Academy has some helpful tips and advice from experts in the upcoming Family Academy webinar, Anxiety, Trauma, and a Pandemic. Bacon Street is partnering with us to provide families tools to address anxiety and empower children. The webinar is scheduled for Wednesday, April 14th at 6:00 PM, and registration begins this Friday, March 19th. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron, and we all note that Adidas is the correct way of pronouncing that word. It is. Ms. Owenby?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I wanted to give a quick update. The SEAC Committee, the Special Education Advisory Committee, met last week. Our staff presented on the annual special education plan and the application for federal special education dollars. Staff will then provide that information to our board, I think sometime in April. SEAC Committee reviewed last year's annual report, just so they could reflect on what has taken place in this last year in preparation for the report to us in June.
Thank you, Ms. Ombi. Any other committee reports or reports from... Okay. That moves us on to 5.01, citizens' comments.
Hi, my name is Veronica Byer, and I'm a student at DJ Montague, and I think that the kids should be back full-time, and we should pack snacks, but it shouldn't really be that long because the kids could get tired. And I think that they shouldn't wear masks in the school because some of them can't breathe very well with them.
Hey, Tommy Byer. I have two children who go to DJ Montague. I support five days a week in-person learning and a swift departure from where we are currently as the cases continue to decrease. I urge the members of the school board who support this to speak up more loudly and be more vocal, so that maybe Dr. Heron will listen to somebody, and at least you can go to Fridays. Can somebody please tell me why you can't go to Fridays at this point? Please open up these schools. You've done a huge disservice to this community, and now you've gotten yourself into a position where teachers won't even come back. So, you know, figure it out. Open up the schools five days a week.
Hi, my name is Christian Byer, and I'm a student at DJ Montague. I think that we don't need masks because at these other places, we don't wear masks, and that we should go to school five days a week. Why can't we go on Fridays? Why do we have to just stay home? And why do we have the shields?
Hi, my name is Claudia Kessel. I have a kindergarten-age student who is currently in private school, and I would really prefer him to return next school year to public school at Matthew Whaley. I am very much in support of the kids returning five days a week in person, full-time, as soon as possible. I think that's the only way that you can really remediate some of that learning loss that has taken place over the past year, is to get those kids back in school as soon as possible, full-time. Hybrid for many of them only means about 40% of instruction time, which is just not adequate. So, the sooner you can do that, the better. And secondly, at the last board meeting, there was a lot of discussion about trying to estimate enrollment, which I know has a lot of implications for next year, and then trying to get a sense from parents and doing surveys about, you know, are you planning to bring your kids back or not? And I can tell you that if you asked me this today, I would tell you, it depends on you. You have to make a strong public written statement that says, "We are committed to five days a week, full-time, next year, without laptops or iPads in the classroom for next school year." And if you tell us that, then I can tell you, yes, I am planning to bring my child back. But until you do that, I'm still going to come back at you and say, "I don't know. It depends on you."
Hi, this is Cara Falcone, and my daughter attends Jamestown High School. I would really hope that somehow these seniors could have a graduation of some sort this school year, get something on the calendar as soon as possible, so we can all start making plans. It's definitely well-deserved, and they need some type of closure. I really hope that the school committee can consider this, whether it's at Warner Stadium, at Jamestown High Football Field, or just something local, so that we can have a celebration. Please consider this for our seniors at all three high schools. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Crystal Jackson. I'm calling to support in-person learning, five days a week, starting immediately, in-person. There are no positives of online learning for younger children, especially elementary K through 3. We are paying taxes for our children to be in school. It's been a whole year. I think we should make this work like other surrounding counties and states. Let's get these children back in the classroom, in-person, five days a week. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carrie Henderson. I'm calling to voice my support for a return to full-time learning for students in school as soon as possible to try to make up some lost ground before the end of the school year. I'd also like to voice support for you to consider not changing the start of school to before Labor Day. Those of us that have custody and visitation orders in place, sometimes it pretty dramatically affects those, and for some people, it even involves having to come back to court to get those modified. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Gaila Baumgart, High School Board, thank you for taking my call. I am concerned about the comments that you may be having a teacher shortage next year. I agree with Dr. Heron that recruiting quality teachers is the number-one priority, and you must do more to attract teachers to our school division. If other divisions are doing 5% raises, then we must do 6% plus a sign-on bonus. If that means we have to get rid of the customer service training or the equity coordinator until we get our teacher situation under control, then that's what we're going to have to do. Just like with any industry, the way to get teachers is to offer them more competitive pay than our neighbors. I also ask that you look into AmeriCorps, the Troops to Teachers Program, and other creative ways of attracting teachers. Maybe the education school at William &amp; Mary can partner with you in some way. I recommend that you be open to volunteers. We have many retired educators who are now fully vaccinated and want to help. We have parents who are excellent fundraisers. Just let us know how we can help in the community. I encourage you to take a more community-based approach and also expand your creativity. Even if by some way you're able to replace the 47 teachers that you lost, I still believe you need an army of volunteers to help remediate. The speech therapist at my school is completely overwhelmed. The reading specialist at my school is also completely overwhelmed. Please, you need to do more to help the teachers. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Toni Carey. I have four children in the WJCC schools at Stonehouse, Tuano, and Warhill. This past year has been quite a struggle, and it's been hard to keep them motivated and interested in school. And ever since they have been back, they come home with a light in their eyes and are excited, and they're getting their work done, and they are learning and growing and spending time with their peers and their friends. And I really just support them going back full-time. I appreciate that we are back two full days now, but would love to see the time increase. I feel like the students really need this, and WJCC has done the vaccines, and we should be gearing up toward full-time school now. Thank you for taking the time to listen and for your consideration.
Hello, this is Christine Jensen. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the school board and for our WJCC school leadership for the great work in welcoming us to Path 3 and to getting our kids back into the classroom. I have a son at Berkeley Middle School and a daughter at Jamestown High School, and I am just seeing such a change in their demeanor and their spirit and their motivation to be good students by being back in the classroom. So, I just want to thank all the teachers and staff at the school level in particular for all they're doing to closely adhere to the safety protocols so that we can hopefully move into the Path 4 phase very soon. So, I would encourage the school board to look at all of our options for moving our students from Path 3 to Path 4. I do understand some of the schools in our area have made four days a week in option versus the five days. So, thank you again for all the good work you're doing on behalf of our students.
This is Linda Liebler-Pont. I'm calling to express my concern with children not being in school learning. I'm a retired educator with 32 years' experience, elementary, middle, and instructor of elementary education majors at Old Dominion University. Research supports educational best practices that best meet the needs academically, socially, and emotionally of our students. My five grandchildren attend JCC schools. They have expressed their academic and social struggles with me. They feel they are not learning for understanding via virtual instruction. They find themselves unable to concentrate with distractions from online technical issues, lack of interesting learning activities, learning with classmates, and hours of grueling daily screen time. They miss interacting with their friends and teachers in the school feeling, and feel like their grades are inflated. Please bring our students back to school five days a week for effective learning. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Christine Clark. I'm calling to voice my support for the post-Labor Day return to school. I think that this is not a great year to make such a significant change. I understand that many families have already booked vacations and made plans for the last week of summer and feel that this year has been so difficult on the kids already, and I hate to have to have them lose potentially a week of vacation that may have already been planned. I understand that in the future, and possibly the following year, I would support, I would completely support the starting of school before Labor Day, but I feel that this year, after the difficulties they've all experienced with COVID, we should allow the kids to have that one last week of vacation. Thank you very much for taking my thoughts into consideration.
My name is Brian Coleman. I have three boys in your school system, one in elementary, one in middle school, and one in high school. And I have to say, I'm thoroughly disgusted with the way the school board is handling this situation with COVID and getting these kids back to school. They need to be in school full-time, five days a week. No more excuses. If any teachers are worried about being at risk, I am a local firefighter medic, and I got to tell you, just buy an N95 mask and wash your hands. It works. Let's get these kids back to school before you do any more damage to them. It is destroying their social development, and they're all struggling with this online learning that is not working. They are not being taught. They have to learn on their own. So, please, let's get this over with and go back to school. Thank you.
Hi, this is Greta Van. I have a seventh grader at Hornsby Middle. I just wanted to call in and once again voice my support for having five days in-person instruction available to our kids effective immediately. This two-day-a-week program is chaotic. The technology doesn't work. The owls don't work well. The microphones don't work. It's hard on the students. It's hard on the teachers, and the risk is very, very low to sending our kids back five days a week. I understand that there are parents who are not feeling comfortable with that, and they have the virtual option. So, please give us the option that we're requesting in getting our kids back in-person, five days a week, effective immediately. Thank you.
My name is Jonathan Hamilton. I'm calling to advocate for the students to have five in-person days of instruction. We have many examples around us of how to safely return to full-time schools. The kids certainly deserve this, and the burden of varied lesson plans daily on teachers at this point is too much. So, as I stated before, I'm calling to advocate for five days in-person.
My address is Good Afternoon. This is Stephanie Troggen, and I'm calling to show appreciation for bringing students back into the building. What a remarkable difference I saw in my teenage students after just their first day of returning to school and in the classroom. I saw a cheerfulness, spark, and light that I hadn't seen since last school year. I encourage you to keep going with the forward progress and get students back into the building five days a week for the families that choose to do so. This has made a tremendous difference in their mental and academic health. Thank you for your work, and we look forward to some good news in the future.
My name is Nicole Smith. My children should be going to Norwich Elementary School. They are not. They are currently homeschooled due to the inefficiency of the Jamestown County ward. We have serious concern over next school year and if it is going to be best for our children to put them into public school next year. I hope that you guys make a decision based on science, which is that it's safe for the children to return to school, and I hope you make decisions based on what's best for the children because in the big picture of things, going to school is what's best for the children, and that is what you are here for. You are here to decide what's best for the children. So, hopefully, I will be returning my children to public school for the school year of '21, '22, and they will be getting back to normal because the science says it is safe. And I hope you soon open up these board meetings for questions so that parents can come in and ask you.
Okay, I'd like to appreciate my thanks to everyone who called in and provided comments. I know the board appreciates your comments, and we thank you for providing them to us for our consideration. So, thank you very much. That brings us to the consent agenda. 6.01, approval of minutes from February 16th, '21, and March 2nd, '21. 6.02, the personnel actions as presented this evening. 6.03, Resolution R921, Disability Awareness Month. Number 6.04, Resolution R1021, Equity in Education Month. Item 6.04, Resolution R1121, Month of the Military Child. 6.06, Resolution R1221, VSBA Business Honor Roll. Can I get a motion to approve their consent agenda as presented?
Mr. Chair, so moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Any discussion? Ms. Aller?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. That takes us to 7.01, financial report and monthly bills and payroll of February 2021. Can I get a motion to approve the financial report and monthly bills and payroll for the month ended February 28th, 2021?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the financial report and monthly bills and payroll for the month ending February 28th, 2021.
Thank you, Mrs. Owenby. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. Any discussion? Ms. Cook?
Mr. Chair, this is a revised financial report, and I had the, unfortunately, I wasn't able to look at it revised, and so... So, could we just get an update on what was revised, please?
Absolutely. So, this revised report reflects the most recent updated sales tax estimates from the state, and those have increased from previous reports state, and those have increased from previous reports that have been shared with you.
So sales tax estimates, are they typically revised throughout the fiscal year, Ms. Ewing?
Typically, they are not, but I think this is an unusual year, so they have been looking at it periodically throughout the year.
So they've adjusted it, they adjusted it throughout the year for you, and you've included it, so.
Yes.
And do we need to, as a board, then take action to adjust the budget, then?
I believe the county and city would first need to take action on their own budgets before we would take action on our budget to increase it.
Is that something that's in the works?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Any none? Ms. Aller?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. That brings us to 7.02, Approval of the Operating Budget for Fiscal Year '22. As a member of the school board of Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge that I may have an interest in the fiscal year '22 school budget because my wife is an employee of the WJCC schools. However, I believe that I am able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. Mrs. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As a member of the school board of Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge I have an interest in the fiscal year '21, '22 school budget because I'm an employee of the Williamsburg Health Foundation. However, I believe I'm able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly and in the public interest.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Can I get a motion to approve the fiscal year '22 operating budget in the amount of
Chairman, I move that we approve the fiscal year '22 operating budget in the amount of $167,475,070.
Thank you, Mrs. Hummel. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Ombi. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Ewing is going to give a very brief presentation of the update of some numbers tonight before the board votes on the final budget. Ms. Ewing?
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Based on the approved General Assembly's budget, we would receive an additional $1,351,000 in state funding next year. The recommended expenditure adjustments to the superintendent's proposed budget include updating the salary increase from 3% to 4% for an estimated cost of $1 million, as discussed at the last board meeting, and adding the remaining $351,000 to elementary reserve teaching positions. This would fund approximately four additional FTEs. This would maintain the current request to our funding partners of approximately $1.5 million as presented in the superintendent's proposed budget, which is an increase of 1.5% for James City County at just under $1.3 million, and an increase of 2.2% based on the funding formula for the city of Williamsburg, or approximately $210,000. This table shows the updated fiscal year '22 estimated amounts, including a 4% salary increase. The total of all funds, including operating grants, state-operated programs, and child nutrition services funds, amounts to a total of $167,475,070. Overall, there is a $9.6 million increase year-to-year for the operating fund, of which $8.1 million is supported by increased state revenue, including sales tax, and the remaining $1.5 million will become a request for additional funding from the localities.
Ms. Aller, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Thank you, Ms. Ewing. Are there any comments or questions from board members? Ms. Young?
I noticed that we've increased the salary from 3% to 4%. Is there any possibility to raise it to 5%?
That would involve increasing the amount we're requesting from the localities.
To what percent? Do we have any idea what percentage that would be?
If we were to add 1%, it's the equivalent of $1 million.
Right, I understand, but to add the additional $1 million, that would equal 1%. Is that what I'm understanding you saying?
If we add 1% to the salary increase, it equals $1 million. I'm not sure what the percentage would be to the localities, but obviously it would increase the amount that we would be asking as a organization of them.
So it basically would increase, I think, about $900,000 from the county and $100,000 from the city. Rough numbers?
Roughly, approximately.
So that'd be additional $900,000 we'd ask from James City County and an additional 100 from the city.
Right, I understand that. I think my question is, we're talking about a difference of 1.5%, which is what the county had asked us to propose, but I was just wondering how much of a percentage, an additional 1% of salary increase, it would be. I mean, am I making myself clear, or do I confuse the issue more? But, I mean, I know there would be an increase of that 1.5%, but I was just wondering how much. I mean, we're in big competition. I mean, we're looking at huge increases across the state, so in order to attract teachers, we need to be competitive.
I don't know what that percentage would be off the top of my head. I'm happy to go get a calculator and figure that out.
Would you please? I would appreciate it. Maybe I'm the only one that...
Yeah, I understand what you're asking. Are there any other questions that would not require Mrs. Ewing's input? Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'd just like to build on what Mrs. Young was saying, and I agree that we should do more than 4%, but I think it's a little late in the process, and I think, given that we're a tourism-dependent economy, and it's going to take a while for tourism to recover, I think we really need to stay put where we are, particularly in the wake of already having had the joint meeting. So I think if we were going to do that, that would have been the time to bring that up. And additionally, although I do think in future years, we do need to do something more aggressive about salary to get ahead. You've been clear, Dr. Heron and your team, about where we rank, and as longevity pay, as people who get longevity pay retire, we're going to fall even further when it comes to overall average pay. But that said, I think one of the things that we heard from the Education Association over the years is that class size ranked higher than pay. And so this budget begins to address that. And so I think a 4% raise coupled with lower class sizes and making progress on that is going to go a long way. So I'm hoping that that will make a difference. So I have a question about the extra FTEs you're proposing, Dr. Heron. If enrollment doesn't come back higher than we think, would we fill those positions, or will we bank, or will we hold steady on that?
The additional positions, there already are four additional positions in the budget, and this would add an additional four, eight positions, and those will be allocated to elementary schools. Plus, we are going to ask for another eight positions with CARES Act funding and the new federal funding coming our way, so that we can add 16 teachers to elementary classrooms to reduce class size. We're also working through the process, and we're starting to do that, to add trailers at almost every elementary school, except Matthew Whaley that has two already. Some, Stonehouse will have the most, and almost every other elementary school will have an extra trailer, which is two classrooms. And all of that is to reduce class size across the elementary schools, to provide more space for physical distancing, should we be back in the middle of the pandemic again, so we can actually be in school five days a week, which is our intention, and also smaller class size to cope with learning loss of students. So there's two things driving it, space and learning loss, so that we will be able to and plan to be and will be in school five days a week in the fall. 16 more elementary teachers and 16 more classrooms across our nine elementary schools.
I actually have two more questions, but I don't know if you want me to keep going? Okay. So, and then my other question has, I have a question about trailers, but I want to go back to the salary increase of 4%. Will that apply to everybody, or might there be some employees that don't qualify for all or part of that?
It's a 4% average across all employees. We have not worked and applied that 4% to the scale yet, but we'll bring that information to the board as soon as we've done so. But the intention is to have an average of 4%.
Might there be teachers at the top of the scale who may not get a portion of that?
We haven't worked it all out yet.
Thank you. When you do, if you could bring that to us.
Absolutely.
And then the last question has to do with trailers, which you spoke about. Are we, I know you kind of mentioned something at the joint meeting, but what are your, what's your forecast in terms of our ability to get enough trailers in place by September?
It's going to be very challenging. There's a process to put trailers in place that takes several months, but we're going to reach out to the city and county. We obviously talked about it at the joint meeting, and ask for their partnership in trying to have trailers approved and put in place for the beginning of school.
So is there any way that this board, I mean, assuming everybody agrees, that we could ask for an expedited process if that is possible? I don't know if everyone agrees with that, but if, I mean, but if, but if some sort of extra work is needed to make that happen, I'm hoping that they'll help us?
We're certainly going to advocate for that, and I believe, Mr. Chair, you want to speak to, we're probably, I'm going to put everything in writing from last Friday, and we will officially ask for help to expedite the process, both the approval process and the purchasing process.
Dr. Heron and I are working on a letter to send to the board of supervisors and the city council to ask for their help to expedite that process.
I appreciate that and would very much support that. Ms. Chair?
Anything else, Ms. Cook?
I said that's all, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions from board members?
I would like to hear from Ms. Ewing, from Ms. Young, and perhaps respond.
Sure. So with adding another percent salary raise, that would cost $1 million, so that would increase the James City County request to $2.19 million, which is a 2.6% increase over the current year. And based on the funding formula, that would be a request to the city of $9.3 million, which is an increase of $314,000 approximately, which is a 3.5% increase.
Okay, thank you very much.
Ms. Ombi?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to echo my support, and I think that this budget is spot-on with the focus on equity, particularly with the increase in our English language learner teachers, our special education teachers, our behavior specialist. I am excited about the equity position and what that will bring to the division. Like my colleagues, I wish that we could offer our teachers more than 4%, but I think that's wonderful that we had the additional funding to bump it up from 3% to 4%. So, worded.
Thank you, Ms. Ombi. Any other comments from board members? Mr. Chair? Mr. Dowell?
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I do support this budget as proposed, and with regard to Ms. Young's question, going from four to five, while I understand the rationale behind that, needing to remain competitive and seeing how York, and I think it was Hampton and another division going from three to five so quickly, it, again, keeps us lagging behind, unfortunately. But as I had stated all along, I would not be comfortable at this stage, still seeing that we're in the throes of a pandemic. Not everybody is back to work. We've got our funding partners with the city talking about an eight-cent raise in tax revenue during a pandemic, and not to get into their business, some county, of course, but I don't think now is the time to go back and ask our funding partners for yet more money when there's still so much unknown there. But I get the rationale, I get the heart behind it. I just think now is not the appropriate time for that. I do appreciate what we're able to do for our teachers at 4%, and I think that'll be fantastic. It'll go a long way to help.
Thank you, Dr. Beers.
Yeah, I certainly would like to see teachers receive a higher percentage raise, but I do also believe that we are going to be facing, I think, a real space crunch this fall with our returning students, and I think it's more important to make sure we can accommodate all of those students, and given the constraints that we're probably still going to be operating on. So I fully support the budget the way it is right.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Hummel?
I agree with my fellow school board members that I think our priority right now has to be getting our house in order next year, making sure that we have the mitigation, the space to do the mitigation strategies that we need, and that will be of benefit to our teachers. And I do agree with Mrs. Young that our teachers deserve more than 4%. I think it's going to have to be a discussion that we have around 11 months from now, or maybe 10 months from now, when we have a better idea of how the year went, and moving forward, what tourism is like in our community, and our sales revenues, and everything else. And then at that point, I think we should give notice that we're going to be pushing for an increase for our teachers so that we can stay competitive with all of our neighboring school systems.
Thank you, Mrs. Hummel. Any other comments from board members? So I have two questions. During our monthly bills and payroll, we modified our sales tax estimate. Is there any reason that we should look at our sales tax estimate for next fiscal year in total? Or is what we're doing guidance we're getting from the state?
All right, actually, yeah, the sales tax was also updated for next year as well, based on the previous, the superintendent's proposed budget, but we are still budgeting for that 5% decline based on our six-year trend data.
Okay. Okay, so that has been included in the budget we have in front of us?
Yes.
Okay. At the last meeting, we talked about any increase that we were going to put that all towards teacher salary and kind of looked at that, but I do agree with the additional FTEs for the teachers and getting them to 4%. I also agree with what my colleagues have talked about as far as getting more money for our teachers, and we would really like to go to the 5% from where we are. Maybe if our funding partners are listening to this, they can think about that when they approve our budget. But it's going to be increasingly competitive as we go forward, getting teachers and actually attracting high school kids to the teaching profession. I think that day of reckoning is coming, and it's coming sooner than any of us want to see. So it'll be interesting. Any other comments before we vote? Ms. Aller?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. That brings us to 7.03, Approve Award of Contract for Media Equipment and Telecommunications Repairs and Services to OpTech Not to Exceed $300,000 Per Year. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the award of contract for media equipment and telecommunications repairs and services to OpTech not to exceed $300,000 per year.
Is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Ombi.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Young. Is there any discussion? We did talk about this at the last meeting, had a discussion about that. So hearing none, Ms. Aller?
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. 7.04, Approved Purchase Request of Laptops for Elementary/Middle School Teacher Use to Lenovo and the Associated Budget Transfer in the Amount of $652,163. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve purchase request of laptops for elementary and middle school teachers, teacher use to Lenovo, and the associated budget transfer in the amount of... teacher use to Lenovo and the associated budget transfer in the amount of $652,163.
Thank you, Mrs. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. Any discussion? This is part of our routine refreshment for our middle school and elementary teachers, and we've put a lot of pressure on our technology. Thank you. Ms. Zoller?
Mrs. Young? Yes. Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Thank you. That takes us to 7.04, award contracts for requests for proposal 21-14967 World Language Curriculum Resources. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the purchase request of, wait a minute, got the wrong one. Maybe somebody else needs to, sorry. I'm in the wrong spot.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the award of contracts for requests for proposal number 21-14967 World Languages Curriculum Resources to the following companies. Cengage Learning, Carnage Learning, Inc., Savvas Learning Company, and Vista Ohio Learning, Inc.
Thank you, Mrs. Ombi. Mrs. Hummel, would you like a second?
Yes.
Mrs. Thank you, Mrs. Hummel. Is there any discussion? Thank you. Mrs. Zoller?
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Thank you. 7.06, approve a word of contract 21-14959 Roof Restoration at Stonehouse Elementary School to Adelphi Contracting, Inc. in the amount of $84,700. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a word of contract number 21-14959 Roof Restoration at Stonehouse Elementary School to Adelphi Contracting, Inc. in the amount of $84,700.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Zoller?
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Thank you. 7.07, can I get a motion to approve the proposed 2021-2022 Academic Calendar that begins on Monday, August 30th, 2021, with the school year ending for students on Friday, June 10th, 2022? Can I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve the proposed 2021-2022 Academic Calendar that begins on Monday, August 30th, 2021, with the school year ending for students on Friday, June 10th, 2022.
Thank you, Mrs. Hummel. Is there a second?
I can't.
And Mrs. Young? Young? Dr. Heron, do you have anything you would like to add to the discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Mr. Kiefer is going to present just a very short presentation this morning, giving some feedback on the citizens' input and just the reasons for this recommendation this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, school board members. Wanted to share with the group the themes from stakeholder feedback. As I get started this evening, there were 1,250 comments that came in over the feedback window. And those comments ranged across the spectrum in terms of support for the two versions of the calendar. From the review of that information, I would say that the support for the different draft versions was fairly evenly split. If you drill down into that a little bit more closely and tabulate it out, though it's not a vote, it would appear that about 53% of the community that offered us their feedback supported a pre-Labor Day calendar, whereas 47% supported a post-Labor Day calendar. There were questions within the stakeholder feedback relative to family vacations and travel in late August, and I believe we heard that this evening with one of the citizen callers that shared their feedback. There was a desire from members of the community to know more about the virtual learning days, and as we mentioned in our presentation at the beginning part of the month, we would structure those three days out to ensure that everybody's on the same page in terms of expectations. There was significant appreciation for the two full weeks in December for that winter holiday break. And then throughout the comments, you would note that there was support for returning to five, five days a week face-to-face instruction. As a result of the feedback reviewed and meeting with the calendar committee again, that committee felt fairly strongly. I would say that we almost reached consensus. There were a couple of folks that felt like maybe this wasn't the year, but in general, the calendar committee felt like we ought to move forward with a pre-Labor Day start. One of the comments that came up throughout was why have a four-day week the first week of school? And one of the things that I think we need to share again is that by state code, if you were starting before Labor Day, that needs to be a four-day weekend. So you would be out on that Friday and out on that Monday, which is part of the rationale for starting on Monday, the 30th. It would be a four-day week. And then by code, you have to be out on Friday, and you're out on Monday, and you come back around again on Tuesday. There were also some folks in the comments that wanted an even earlier start in August, wanting us to be able to get to the end of semester one prior to the winter holiday and then closing out the school year on or about Memorial Day. We feel like at this juncture, that might be a bridge too far. Some of the strengths that we enumerated and want to reiterate is that it shortens the instructional gap of this particular summer. There are more instructional days before high-stakes testing. There are fewer school days after testing concludes, and again, we would avoid the first day of school on Rosh Hashanah. Want to remind everyone that we are suggesting that school starts on Monday, the 30th, that Thanksgiving break over those three days, the 24th through the 26th, two full winter holiday break weeks. Spring break is that first full week of April. That is aligned generally with the rest of the peninsula. That has been a longstanding calendar scenario, and again, it falls there, the last day of school on Friday, June 10th. Quickly, I also wanted to mention that one of the features of this calendar would be fewer early release days spread throughout the year and more focused virtual learning days across the calendar, October, January, and March. Then finally, just to reiterate, as we mentioned, and based on some of the questions that came forward from the comments from our stakeholders, the marking periods are broken down as closely to 45 days apiece as possible, but also taking into consideration where there are natural breaks in the calendar based on potential holidays, based on when the school year closes out, et cetera. So this is how the marking periods would break down.
Thank you, Mr. Kiefer. I appreciate it. Any comments from board members? Ms. Ombi?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I had a question, and you may not be able to answer this now, but typically, sports and band students would begin, they would return like the first week of August. So would they return in July to begin their fall season? Do we know that?
Relative to athletics, the Virginia High School League sets a calendar for when the competitive season can begin in terms of trainings, et cetera. So once we have determined what our academic calendar is, we would certainly rely upon the VHSL calendar in terms of return to sports, et cetera. On the co-curricular side, I'm sure that we will adjust our start relative to whenever students need to be ready for that first performance or first competition.
Thank you. And then I just wanted to say I agree with folks on the calendar committee who would like to see eventually at some point in the near future, ending the first semester in December and aligning with community colleges and just coming back the beginning of the new year, fresh and ready to start the second semester.
Thank you, Mrs. Ombi. Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I support this, and thank you very much for your hard work on it. I concur with what Ms. Ombi said about this first semester ending. And if we can't, you know, get into December, at least earlier in January over time, if we could move that way, I think it just makes more sense. Have any other school divisions, and we've spent a lot of time over the years talking about the regional calendar. So I assume this is a departure from the regional calendar. Is that correct?
We would, we would be approving this, I think, before a couple other divisions have approved theirs. I do know of at least one other division located nearby that's considering a pre-Labor Day start. As I understand it, some of the folks further down in the peninsula are not considering the pre-Labor Day start.
This, for the first time, could be a difference in the New Horizon Partners? A significant difference in calendar and start date. Is that correct?
It could be. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, yeah, I think this year taught us a lot about how to navigate that, but I support it. I just wanted clarity on that. And then I asked this last time, and I think you answered it, but I'd like to ask again, why isn't graduation date on this calendar?
There are three tentative dates that were placed on the calendar, June 9, 10, 11, I hope, is the version that you have. There's a triangle next to those three dates. One of our challenges, Ms. Cook, in full transparency, is the potential lack of a venue or venues in order to be able to schedule those. We would like to be able to share with our community all of the specifics around graduation date or dates, but there are some venue challenges right now. So we're going to come out of the gate and say it's June 9, 10, and 11 are the dates that we're tentatively holding.
Okay. So wow, so graduation could potentially take place before the last day of school?
Potentially. That is correct.
Okay.
Mr. Dowell?
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I was ready to support this pre-Labor Day calendar last time we met, and I still am. However, a small asterisk, as we hear from the public, that 47% preferring the post and hearing from public comment, and then some others that have emailed in and made phone calls throughout the week. It reminds me of what we were discussing last year around this time, when we were discussing a potential to change the calendar. And that was really around the hardship that families would face in scheduling vacation time in the summer. And that's what I'm hearing, that vacations have been already planned for, money's already deposited. So I wonder, I wonder if we didn't do this, is there anything lost in contending to do the post-Labor Day plan and projecting this out for the 2022-23 school year? I'm in favor of this. I'm in favor of it now. I would be in 2022-23 simply for the fact that I've heard from students that would like that extra time to prepare for SAT, ACT. I'd like to do that for them now, and I'd like to give them more, more classroom time across our schools in general. But I just wonder if there's anything lost if we wait, having heard from so many families that they've already committed real hard dollars to their summer plans. And that's for anybody to respond.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I fully support the pre-Labor Day calendar for the reasons that have already been given. As a member of that committee, there was a great deal of discussion about the importance of getting students back earlier so that they can work with them. And I think the other thing, and this, you know, and people may, I don't mean to upset people, but we didn't get thousands and thousands of responses in our survey. And I'm reluctant to have four or five comments made publicly. One of the reasons that I'm going to decide on one thing or another, I just, I'm leery of using that information. And I think the fact that even those who did respond pretty evenly split right down the middle. I sensed that as I was reading through all the comments, and believe me, I was trying to read through, how many were there?
1,250.
Anyway.
37 pages.
37 pages is exactly right.
Tabulated, and when you realize that, well, shoot, somebody's not going to like what we do. And that's, that's just, you know, I think that's, that's probably going to be the case. I don't think it's too early to do something. I think it sends a message out that we want to get started back just as quickly as we can. And so I definitely support the pre-Labor Day calendar.
Ms. Ombi?
And if I could just add and build on Dr. Beers' comments, I think it's imperative that we do it this year because we need to get our students back in the classroom to mitigate that summer learning loss. So I think this is a critical year to do it.
Ms. Hummel? Ms. Hummel?
Okay. I support, I do support the pre-Labor Day start, and I've been on the board now for five years, and every time it's around this time of year that we're doing the calendar committee, every time around this year. And we will, we'll get the complaint that, oh, I've made summer plans. And then to respond to that when every year it's the same, it's about the same time that we're bringing all of this up. So I guess I would just say that you have to weigh the pros and the cons. And to me, the pros for starting pre-Labor Day offset the cons of a few families that might have to ask for a change in their vacation plans.
Thank you. Ms. Young?
Yes, and I'm building on what Ms. Hummel said. I agree with her. Not only that, but as a parent, having been there, I know that most schools would work cooperatively with families if they were not able to return to school that first week. So I support this plan, and I think it's a step forward for our students, and I do feel an urgency. And I'm sure that we all are getting our kids back in school as quickly as possible, five days a week. And so I support this totally.
Thank you, Mrs. Young. Mr. Dowell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and allowing me to circle back. So, yeah, I simply want to know if there's anything that's lost by waiting that one year. And I want students back now. I want them back five days a week now. Next year, I want them back earlier so that they can prepare for those critical tests that they want to do their very best on, to be competitive throughout the country for university placements. My concern, and like I said, I stand ready to support this tonight, but my concern is do we give the public, you know, ample time to make plans? Which has been the concern of this board for the last two years that I've been observing it, how we, will we give them enough time? And so I'm not sure that we did this time, but I think, you know, you gotta, you gotta strike while the iron's hot, so.
Can I respond to that? I don't know where it is, you know, this is a typical time every year that the calendar is set. So I think a message might be to our community to know that the school board is going to be setting a calendar in the March timeframe. And I think if that is the, if that's the message that, because it's consistent, it's every single year. It's March timeframe for setting the calendar. So some of it has got to be kind of a communication to our community know that, and then to plan accordingly.
Yeah, I'm going to take both sides of that question. So you have to make your plans a year in advance sometimes to get the beach houses and things. And I know in the past that we have, we have approved the next year's calendar and then approved a draft calendar behind that for the next year. We haven't done that in a while. Last year, the world was going crazy, so proving another calendar would have been kind of interesting. So if we, if we go back to that where we approve a draft, understanding that could change, that might help folks do their thing. Dr. Beers?
I completely agree with that. I see no reason why we can't do a biennial calendar, you know, like every, every two years, every major educational institution, especially in higher education all across the country. They have their calendars put together that are like two, three, sometimes four years, five years. I don't see any reason why we've got the makings. I mean, I'd be willing to continue with the committee to go ahead and work out the kinks for the, for next year. So then we really, I think that would be, and we'd always be a year ahead. If we did a biennial, we'd always be ahead.
Good. Ms. Young?
No, I think that's, that's a point well taken, Dr. Beers. I agree. I see no reason why we can't, I mean, I like the idea of doing the draft calendar. But I mean, I think there's no reason we can't adopt for two years if we get, if we get to the point where we can do that efficiently and the community knows about it, because then I think that kind of offsets this, this, I mean, because every year we hear about people people about vacation times, and by doing it in a biennial way, then they would know a whole year in advance when they needed to schedule their vacation.
Understanding it was a draft calendar, but the...
Well, draft or, or the biennial.
Right.
Mr. Dowell?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Ms. Ombi?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. I just want to point out, in terms of communicating to the public, we did have a presentation in the spring, March-ish of 2019. Dr. Murphy provided extensive information about pre-Labor Day start, and we began that deliberation. One of the things that came from that conversation was making sure that we didn't have the first day of school on Rosh Hashanah, a high holiday. And so the community has been given notice, and then, of course, COVID hit the following March. So I don't, in an ideal world, COVID would not have happened, and we probably would have had that draft calendar, but this conversation began two years ago.
At least two years ago. Ms. Cook?
Yeah, and I don't, I certainly look to staff to make a recommendation, but I wonder, the idea of adopting a biennial budget on a rolling basis...
Calendar.
Calendar, sorry, sorry, sorry. On a rolling basis is compelling to me, and since we have, for the first time ever, taken that step to not be part of the regional calendar, I think we are in a position to unilaterally do that. Or I think we may be in a position to do that. Again, I would look to staff for their recommendation or consideration on that, but if we can then, you know, adopt a budget, not just a draft budget, but, I mean, gosh, calendar, sorry.
We know where your mind is.
Yeah, right. Calendar, every year for two years out, I think we would be just better for, it would be better for our community for planning purposes. And again, it doesn't have to be a draft, because we're no longer tying ourselves to that regional calendar. So again, I look to staff to make that recommendation, but I, it's, I wonder if that might work in the future.
I think, Ms. Cook, your point's well made, because we're changing from the regional and diverting from the regional calendar, it does, does give us more opportunity to set our own calendar well in advance.
My only comment to that would be, it'd be a rolling two-year, so, you know, you accept, and so that way, the next year's calendar, you might have to make little tweaks to it depending upon whatever, things, things that change. So I would still, I would still put the second one out there as a proposal, a draft, and the next one is, is what the calendar's going to, you know, the calendar for the year, and then have the draft so that people can prepare. Graduation Day is going to be kind of a challenge, because William &amp; Mary Hall's under renovation, and so we got to kind of figure out what that venue looks like. And so I appreciate having the three days, understanding that we're going to have to, have to figure something out there. I think both teachers and the public will appreciate fewer early release days. That has always been a challenge in the past. I agree with, I agree with Mrs. Cook about the regional calendar, and we figured out how to not be on the regional calendar, and it's not the worst in the world. So I think, I think we can adjust to that for all of our learners, including the New Horizons and the, and the Early College. Particularly this year, September 8th is an awful late date for the start of school, and I, I would struggle with starting that late, understanding that it pushes everything out a week, and we're out, we're out to a week later in June. I, I like getting out of school earlier in June. I'm not sure about graduation right there at the, at those, before the last day of school, but that's something we can certainly try going forward. I also think, too, I think, I know that we all want school five days a week, and that's where we're going, and I, and we really want to get there. We're all getting vaccinated, and so this COVID is on the lane, but it's not gone. So if, if there's a potential for a resurgence that happens in the winter months, December and January, we get as much school in beforehand, five days a week before, before we're told or forced to adjust to that, you know, and our intention is five days a week. We really, we're planning on that, we're focused on that, we're, we're working towards that, we're going to do that. But we, if we haven't learned anything over the past year, it's, we have to be flexible. And so I think that it's important that we, we get in school as soon as we can and start to, start to adjust for the learning loss of the summers and making up for past year. Any other comments from board members before we vote?
From Dr. Heron and staff, are we good?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Ms. Aller?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
And Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. That takes us to 8.01, Return to Learn Forward WJCC Schools 2020-2021. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. This evening, we're going to present two different facets in our WJCC Forward Presentation, and Mr. Kiefer's going to lead us off, and then introduce later on the members of our Health Advisory Team again to present this evening. Mr. Kiefer?
Yes, thanks, Dr. Heron. Appreciate that. Good evening, members of the board, again. As Dr. Heron referenced, tonight's presentation will take two very distinct parts. Part one will include some health data and dashboard information, and an update from the WJCC Health Advisory Team. Conclusion of their portion of the presentation, we will pause for the school board to ask questions of that group, and then we'll transition into some of the WJCC operational updates with respect to students returning on site, with Mr. Walker, Dr. Worley, and Ms. Ford to talk some about summer school. Want to begin by sharing our current dashboard with you. This dashboard has, again, taken a little different turn in terms of the data that we're sharing. The far right-hand side of the dashboard now indicates the number of our students who are in quarantine. That designation is based on a close contact designation, not necessarily close contact in school. It could be a close contact of a family member, but we've added that so that we can give the community a sense of the number of our students who are in quarantine. We also want to point out that at this point, well over 1,500 members of our staff have received both doses of the vaccine, which is really a strong indication of the partnership that we have with the county and the city in order to get that accomplished. As we talk a little bit about quarantining and positive case numbers, we wanted to share with the board and community some of those different pieces that we are tracking internally to help us drive some decision-making. And what I'm sharing with you are some of those key quarantine numbers. I want to focus on the top line where it says elementary, and it says based on school contact five, total 64. And want to explain to you that at the elementary level, there have been a total of 64 staff members who have been in quarantine at some juncture since November. Five of those were related to school contact, being designated a close contact relative to their association in school. Same thing holds true for the number of elementary school students. That number is at 113, but seven of those have been based on school close contacts. And wanted to give you that as an additional data point. If you look down that column under positive case numbers, we have not been able to determine any positive case transmission within the building. Close contacts, yes, but not positive case transmission within the building since November, and feel like that's an important piece to share with you as we're talking about data. Couple weeks back, we referenced the idea that the Center for Disease Control had updated information on their guidance and the operational strategy for K-12 schools through phase mitigation. We went from five levels of risk down to four levels of risk. It is now low, which is blue, moderate, which is yellow, substantial, which is orange, and high, which is red. We also went from a 14-day marker to a seven-day marker, and the data points that designate transitioning from low to moderate to substantial to high are provided there for you. Virginia Department of Health has also made a similar shift in how they are reporting data, which has made things perhaps easier to understand, but on a daily basis, a little bit more complicated to determine exactly where things are sitting. So as an example, here is the city of Williamsburg. The date at the top of this chart says 3/6/2021. This was updated on March 10th, so it's about four or five days in arrears from the date that it's updated, that it's updated on a weekly basis on Wednesdays, and wanted to share that with you. The city of Williamsburg, on this update, it was designated as being high in terms of the number of new cases and in substantial in the number of percent positivity. There is also a designation for each entity when it comes to overall combined core indicators. So again, this is the city of Williamsburg was designated to be in the high area. Each of the dots that you see on this graph represents a week in time. You can see, probably was that about the second or third week in December, all the way through the month of February, the city of Williamsburg has been in the high level. Sharing that with you and with members of our public, just because we are now putting this on our dashboard, or linking to this on our dashboard, and so the data that I'm sharing with you this evening is a bit different than the data that I've shared with you since October, November timeframe. Here's that same look of the data for James City County. James City County, when this was posted on the 10th, but dating back to the 6th of March, was in substantial in terms of case incidents, but was actually in low in terms of percent positivity. And here's the combined metric for James City County, again, from that same date range, being in the substantial level. With the update to the graphics and colors and some of those kinds of things, the seven-day case incident map was also updated to reflect new information. You can see James City County in Williamsburg highlighted here, seven-day case incidents. Then this slide will show you the percent positivity over the seven days. As you see on this map, lots of blue and yellow, that's, that's a strong indicator that percent positivity is dropping below the substantial and high levels. And you'll note that James City County there is highlighted in blue, and if you look really, really carefully, you'll see Williamsburg in yellow, again, all within that blue circle. And as I get ready to transition into our, our Health Advisory Team and their update, want to remind the viewing public that we feel like our mitigation efforts are strong, but it takes all of us in order to continue that strength. So we're asking folks to mask up, to wash up, to back up six feet or more, if at all possible, to clean up, and then to speak up when you feel uncomfortable with those around you or not necessarily following those same strategies. Going to turn this over to Dr. Dolan and Dr. Powell, who are waiting in the wings. Dr. Dolan, are you kicking off? Dr. Dolan? Terrific.
Thanks. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. I wanted to just introduce ourselves again. We are a part of the Public Health Advisory Group, and I am an epidemiologist. I am also the parent of a fourth grader at James River Elementary, and this was my eighth grade French class. So I think that Madame Talati is going to like come in the room and ask me to conjugate a verb any second. And I will turn it over to Chris to introduce herself, and then we could get started with our presentation.
Hi, yes, I'm Chris Powell. Thanks again for having us back. I'm a pediatrician in Williamsburg. I've been practicing here for about 17 years. We're, so our group is associated with CHKD. I'm also the current Vice President of the Virginia Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics, and part of the school reopening group that's a part of that organization. And like I said last time, our school reopening group has been involved with getting, you know, information about children and coronavirus in schools since day one, and we've been meeting every week to every other week, reviewing data and the studies that are out there, and trying to find out ways to help our local communities. I am also a parent of two Jamestown High School students.
All right, so we've had quite a ride. It's been about a year since we've declared that we've had a pandemic, and I came here last August, and at that time, we were talking a lot about kids and disease risk. And I told you that about 97% of the kids that had COVID were asymptomatic, and they were showing mild symptoms, that very few kids had severe symptoms. But at that time, the data and the science was emerging, and we had no idea if these kids were going to school and infecting their teachers, and bringing that home, infecting their families and their community. Chris and I came back in January, and we had new data and science, and we were able to say that kids are not super-spreaders. In fact, we think that schools could have some sort of protective effect. And Chris presented data, local data, from a survey of pediatricians that was pointing to how closing schools was causing a 98% increase in anxiety and a 95% increase in depression. So here we are again with new data and science. Tonight, what we are going to do is focus on interventions and talking about how schools can open safely. Chris and I both get a lot of questions about social distancing, in particular, this three-feet and six-feet distance measure, and so that's what we are focusing on and highlighting tonight, in addition to any other questions that you guys have about interventions. So before we dive into our three and six feet, I wanted to give you a quick EPI update. Mr. Kiefer already gave a more comprehensive overview, but the last time we were here, people were scared. There was a lot of fear, a lot of vaccination hadn't started yet in our school community, and we were trying to figure out what to do. Since that time, things have gotten much more encouraging. We've seen a general decline in our area since we were here in January. At a national level, we're starting to see things level off a little bit, and we're starting to see some spikes in cases due to an easing off of mandates. And so as an epidemiologist, it's really important to me that there's a thoughtful approach to how we are thinking about our mitigation, because the last thing we want is a surge in cases and then to backtrack in any sort of way. We just want to keep on going forward. So on the next slide, when we were here before, we introduced the Swiss cheese model, and in honor of Dr. Heron, and tomorrow being the 17th of March, we can call it the Irish cheddar model, which I recently learned about. So here's our Irish cheddar model, and I want to remind you how to look at this thing. So on the left, you have COVID. On the right, we have our teachers and our students, and by proxy, our families that we're trying to protect. In between, we have all these different layers of, in this example, cheese, on how we're protecting our teachers, our students, and our families from COVID. And so let's remember the things that we have. So starting with our teachers, a lot of our teachers now have both vaccines. We're encouraging hand washing often, we are cleaning and disinfecting. The school has gone through a process to, so, Dr. Kiefer, or Mr. Kiefer can tell you more about it, but the school's gone through a process to integrate more ventilation into the school buildings. We have these barriers and social distancing, and then finally, we have masks. And when I've come here before, when I started last August, we thought masks worked. When it came in January, we knew masks were working. Now we know masks are really, really working. Masks get us a lot of bang for our buck. If two kids are wearing masks, one study shows us that the risk of infection is less than 1%. So we've got these masks, people are wearing them. On top of that, we're adding in distancing and barriers, the ventilation, the cleaning, and the hand washing, plus we've got our teachers vaccinated. It's important to remember that schools are never going to be a zero-risk environment from anything, right? We've got all kinds of risks that are associated with coming to school. And I think that our next best steps are to try and make schools as safe as we possibly can for those people that are in them. So one thing that's really confusing is this distancing guideline. So one group of people, several groups of people, the World Health Organization, the American Academy of Pediatrics, at a local level, VDH and the VDOE are telling us, let's do three, three, three feet. And at a federal level, we have the CDC telling us, let's do six feet if you can, and if you can't, then pod the classes or come up with some sort of cohorting. And so it's confusing to understand the difference and why these two different guidelines exist. I think it's important to pause and think about where these guidelines came from. So, show of hands, anyone know where the guidelines came from? So show of hands, anyone know where the guidelines came from? Oh, okay, so they came, the first one, the three feet guideline came from tuberculosis research in 1934. So a Harvard professor was studying tuberculosis and wanted to know how far, you know, spent with. And that's where the three feet guideline came from. The six feet guideline came from the late 1800s, so even longer. We hadn't had a need for, as a public health or scientific community, to really study these kinds of guidelines in this way until COVID. But over the last year, lots of research is coming out. So we're getting research from the United States, we're getting research from Norway, from Sweden, from Germany, from Italy, all evaluating the three foot and six foot distance guidelines and giving us new information and new science that's important for this board, as well as the general public, to understand. These studies have been gone through, have gone through a rigorous peer reviewed publication process and they're robust. So in a second, I'm going to turn it over to Chris to give you some of the details of the studies. I want to point out that we have one really awesome study that she is going to highlight. It is great because it's a cohort study. It follows people over time. It has lots of people enrolled. It goes across all grade levels. It's really good science. And all of these studies combined are showing us that the distancing guidelines, whether you're three or six, the risk of infection isn't increasing. So that concludes my portion and I'll hand it over to Chris to tell you more details about the actual studies.
All right, has anyone seen this study? Not yet? Okay, well, I'm going to go back to what Carrie said. And what she said was masks are really, really, really important. So this study shows that. This study was done back in September and it was done at the Mayo Clinic. And if you want to take a look at it for a moment before I speak, that would be fine. Just pay attention to that they're, what they're looking at is masking and they're looking at distancing. And if you look at the top, the first section across, we're looking at one feet, three feet and six feet. And then as you move down into the bottom, you're going to also incorporate different levels of masking. So the first row across is no masking. Thanks. And the bottom is both parties masking. So I'm going to take a step back. This was done in a research lab. So we have one study tonight to talk about that was done in a research lab. And then we have one study that Carrie was just alluding to with students in classrooms in Massachusetts that was just published last week. But this study is great because it gives us reassurance that masks work. So like taking it back, they're in the lab, we've got mannequins. Who's seen like a YouTube video of someone sneezing and the spray that comes out, right? I can imagine what you're all thinking now, that spray kind of goes everywhere. So they took these mannequins and they put them across from each other and they watched the spray. And they evaluated the spray with masks, without masks, with different distances. And then they came up with these results. And we refer back in the medical world with, to these results all the time, over and over again. Because what they showed, if you look at the fourth row on the bottom, is that if both the source that's sick and the target are masked, then the risk of infection is very, very low. And that is negligible based on the distance. So it doesn't matter if they're at 1%, 3, or sorry, one feet, three feet or six feet, that the risk is less than 0.5%. So that's really important for a lot of reasons. You know, we, we have our, our students masked. If someone comes to, to school sick and they might be a source, if they've got their mask on, the chances of them spreading that to the target with a mask is very, very low at one feet, three feet and six feet. So that's critical information right there. If you want to break the study down a little bit more and dive into it, they, they, there's, there's different lines. So like on the top row again, that's where the source and the target are unmasked. So there's no masks. But if you get into the next row, that one is with the target masked and the source not masked. And there's two lines there because one mask was a cotton mask and the other line was for, was for paper mask. So this study also looks at, compares the efficacy of cotton mask first with two layers versus paper. And as you can see, when you look at the numbers, there's really no difference. So cotton masks are equally as efficacious to paper masks. So that's helpful as well. When you go down to the third row, we've got the, the target mask this time. So when you compare row two to row three, it's more important to have the source masked than the target masked, which isn't really relevant because in school, we're going to have both parties masked. We have to have universal masking. But it does help for other situations like doctor's offices where we want the kids that are sick to come in with masks on. So, so basically the bottom line is that when we mask both the source and the target, the distance doesn't really matter, that the masking works. It really reduces the exposure risk to less than 0.5%. So that's really important when we talk about bringing our kids back. Can we do less distance? Can we do three feet? Will there ever be a time that we talk about less than three feet? Maybe, we're not there right now, but there's a chance of that based on the study. So that's our mannequin study. The other thing I do want to say about that real quickly is it doesn't, I know we're talking about breaking down the kids into elementary, middle and high school. But when you look at that study and if we mask both the source and the target, it really shouldn't matter what age group they're in because it's so effective. Okay, so this is the best study that just came out this past week. So it was very timely for this talk. And the reason that this one's so great is that it actually is the first study to actually compare students in school at three feet and six feet and the risk of transmission of coronavirus. So unlike a lot of the other studies that we've talked about, the North Carolina study, the Wisconsin study, the Ohio study, those all looked at in-school transmission. And they were great because they showed that the in-school transmission rates were low masked. But we have not had a study until now that actually looked at comparing the rates at three feet and six feet. And that's exactly what this study does. So we can thank Massachusetts for this. The bottom line of this study, you can all take a look. But if you look at the top two lines, you can see that's looking at staff incidence rates of coronavirus. And the two lines for staff cases are no different whether they're at three or six feet. There's no statistical difference in that. And then if you look at the bottom two lines, there's no statistical difference in the students getting coronavirus if they're at three or six feet. So that is a great study. I can break down the details a little bit more. It was a huge study, took place in school, in-person learning in Massachusetts, 243 districts. So I don't know how many districts are in Virginia, 132?
32.
32? Yeah, so you can imagine this was huge. It was like basically the whole state and these were public schools. And, and the, the other part of this that's great is that it, the study was 16 weeks long. So they ran it through September through the mid-January. So that's helpful too, because the community rates in Massachusetts were super high in December. As you can see, the, it really goes up, the coronavirus incidence, right? But that's helpful for us to know because they're looking at transmission in school during periods of very high coronavirus activity in the community. So that was another good thing about the study. And then how they did this is they took school districts, some were really crowded and they had to only do three feet. And others had more space so they could do six. So they were able to like, you know, correct the variables and actually compare the two. And they saw no statistical difference in three versus six feet. So land, it's, it's a game changer right here. And so in the medical world, we are all talking about this study. We're wondering if CDC is going to look at this and change their guidelines. If you read the news, the, the study is going to come up. It's been really helpful for us. If you look at the overall case incidence too, just quickly, it was like 0.7% for students and 2% for staff. So, and everybody had to be masked in this. So it was like very close to 100% masking. So it gets us back to where we started with Carrie saying masks are very, very, very important. They really, really work. The layers of our, the Swiss cheese model is very important too. But certainly the masks work. And so when we move forward and try to bring our kids back, we'll continue to look at the data. And we, maybe we will see something less than three feet in the future. But we got to keep the masks on.
Dr. Powell, the Massachusetts study was also done with unvaccinated teachers?
Yeah, because it was back, starting, some of them might've been vaccinated through it, but it was started in September.
Right, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Questions from board members? Ms. Hummel?
Not really a question, just a really, really huge thank you for this. Because it's been my, the question that's forefront in my mind is the three feet versus six feet and the mitigation, the, just all of the planning that has to go into trying to separate people by six feet. And, and it leads to a hybrid situation. It leads to, you know, there's so much more we can do when we're three feet apart than when we're six feet apart. So for me, this is huge. And I'm, I'm wondering if you're going to be sharing this with William and Mary as well. It'll impact William and Mary.
Is that, is that a personal interest there?
It's a personal interest.
So I am on President Rose Public Health Advisory Team. And then so this information they have, so yes.
Great, but yes, huge thanks to you guys. Thank you.
Ms. Lundy?
I just wanted to say, I appreciate the fact that you reiterated how important masks are because we had callers call in tonight questioning why students should wear masks and could they stop wearing masks? And so we do follow the science and so this is very clear. At three and six feet, we can only get there if we're wearing our masks and if everyone is consistently wearing masks. So thanks for providing that.
Ms. Cook?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you both for being here. We really do appreciate it. Yeah, I think the more you can, while you, while you're here tonight, the more you can talk about universal masking, the better. Because I do think that that is something that is not universally believed in our community. So that would be helpful to say again before you leave. Back to the Massachusetts study, I'm curious. So the three versus six feet, that was just, that was in-school policy. So there was no, no inspection for fidelity to that. So the, the six foot schools could have been at three feet, you know, as students moved through the building. Is that a fair question? You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think they truly tried to keep it like, you know, consistent throughout the study so that they could do the study. I mean, it's possible, like to the extent possible that they kept the three feet or six feet. But truthfully, reading through it, it sounds like they were, they, they did continue with it for the four month period.
Okay. And I know this wasn't the point of the study, but I'm curious if you happen to know how these, the case rates per 100,000 for this study compared to the case rates per 100,000 in the community? Like were these lower, equal? Do we know that?
I do know they were lower than the community rates, yes.
Back to the idea that being in school could somehow have a protective factor.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, thank you. That's really helpful.
Yes.
And so one thing that you guys didn't talk about, and I'm just curious what you're thinking is, and it almost seems like we've kind of abandoned the idea, at least in the school environment, of testing and tracing. Is that just, just mask and forget about the other parts and just do this, the, I'm sorry, Irish, Irish cheddar cheese model?
Two different, there's testing and then there's tracing. We are doing tracing.
We have a very robust tracing system that's led mostly by our nurses at the school level. And, and then we work closely with the Virginia Department of Health to follow up on every single case. We do not test in the school environment. We do, we do a health check. Parents and fa, and staff do health checks before they come to work.
It is so expensive to do the test.
Testing is very complicated. It's not easy. You have to, you have to get Clear Wave to run the test. You have to have a provider or physician order the test. You have to have providers review the results, call, you'd have to hire a physician basically for the school district to do that for you, which is very expensive. And, and, and I think there are in some districts throughout the state that don't have nurses even in their, their school. So yeah, I don't think that's anything we're going to look at anytime soon. It's great they can come to us at our offices if they're sick. We'll test them.
So but layered over the Irish cheddar model is the, is that, did I get that right, Dr. Dolan?
I'm glad you're referencing the right cheese tonight. It's very, very important.
So there is tracing though, ongoing for, okay.
Every single time, there is a robust follow-up with everyone who was in close contact with the student or the teacher. And there's letters of notification to families and there's phone calls when necessary. Parents should not be concerned that they won't know what's happening because they will know every time a student is in contact or in close contact with another student who has been identified positive.
Or teacher or staff person, yeah. And then my last question has to do with the three feet. I know we were talking about the difference between six feet and three feet. But what if the number of available teachers or the amount of classroom space a school division has doesn't allow for three feet? What are, what are your thoughts on that?
I think, I think that's where you would get into cohorting. And then you separate your cohorts by three feet or six feet, however you want to do it. So that's kind of where these guidelines, you know, say to the extent possible. It's because there are other things you can do like potting and cohorting groups and then separating the groups from each other.
Ms. Cook, we're going to present a little bit about that tonight because with the six feet foot guideline, we can only stay in a hybrid form. But with the, the, looking at three feet, we still have 40 classrooms across eight elementary schools, for example, that where we can't meet the three feet. And so we are going to talk about some of the mitigation and potting as a, as a possible way forward.
There's also, the CDC mentions barriers as well. So a couple of different options to work with.
So you're, so as long as you're potting and putting up barriers?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And wearing masks.
Wearing masks, thank you.
It's all about the masks.
We got to get that headline.
It's all about the masks.
Got to get that sound right.
They work.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I think this presentation is extremely valuable and, and all of the information, even if it's as technical as this and, but I have, I very much appreciate the level of sophistication of some of these studies and the results. And they're being shared with, with the board and our superintendent. And I just points out, I'd like to just point out to those who have complained the loudest that we do indeed follow the science, all of the science. And it is continuing to evolve as we gather additional information. And, and we're right at, you know, our superintendent is, is right on top of all of that, all the time. And continues to be well informed. And, and I think some of the folks out in, in our audience need to recognize that. Take a deep breath, calm down, that we do know the science. They do in fact know what they're doing. And I fully support that and I very much appreciate the data. And I'm going to go look at those studies because I, that's fascinating.
Any other comments from board members? Nothing?
I do appreciate the information. One of the things which I also appreciate the transparency from both, both the January meeting and this meeting, some of this data might call into question Monday morning quarterbacking in that we should have been in school and we should have been, we should have taken different actions than what we, what we have. So that, so we open ourselves up to that Monday morning quarterback. But you know, we, we are, we are ahead of many school systems in our region and behind just a few. And I don't really necessarily mind doing that when it comes to the safety of our staff and our students and our community. And I appreciate the, the reliance on the science as we, as we develop a plan going forward. The one, one question I did have on Mr. Keever's presentation, one of the, one of the slides, he talked about positive case transmission versus positive cases. Is there a distinction there? Are we talking about positive case, but transmissions of, transmission in our schools since we've been back? Or, because have there, have been, have there been positive cases amongst our students and staff? You had a bunch of zeros up there.
Yes, sir. So if I, if I understand your question correctly, and I'll, I'm going to go back to the slide that I think you're talking about.
It was number three, I think, is the, was way back in the beginning, no?
Apologize for those that are watching this getting dizzy. Just a couple more to go. You talking about that one?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. So there, there have been positive cases and there will continue to be positive cases. But what this chart is designating is, is that positive case, at least at the bottom, relative to a school contact that has been established?
Right. Right, that's, and that's what I don't want to make sure that we're, we're distinct about. So we're not saying that we haven't had positive cases in our schools.
Correct.
Because we have. But what we're saying is that we can't trace where those, where those cases were transmitted in the school.
That is correct.
So, so I just want to make sure when people see the zeros here. So I just want to make sure when people see the zeros here, that say, see, you've had no cases in the schools amongst, amongst your students. I just want to make sure that we're clear that that's, that's not the case, that this is, we have, we have had positive cases. But what it, what it does tell you is that the mitigation activities and actions that we've taken have helped to keep those from becoming transmissions in the schools.
That's what we believe, yes, sir. Additionally, in those cases where there have been positive cases within a school, we have shared that almost immediately with members of that school community to inform the parents, to inform the teachers, to share exactly what it is that's transpired.
Right. So, so we just can't lose sight that it's still out there. We just...
Correct. Correct.
Good. Okay. Thank you. And I do appreciate Dr. Dolan and Dr. Powell, your presentation tonight, the information that you've shared. It took me a while to understand the, the feet slide because three feet, they seem to be closer and six, and then I was, and then I got, oh, three feet and six feet, I got it. Took me a couple of seconds.
Sorry.
No, I got, I got, I got. So, but I appreciate, I appreciate the data, I appreciate the information, and it certainly gives, gives us some, some guidance as to how we plan our path forward. So I really do, I really do thank you for that. Okay.
We're going to move on to Part B. Interestingly, the key study that really will drive, I think, change just came out last week. And so it's great to have that information for the board tonight. So now we're going to talk a little bit about how we begin to move towards our next phase in return to learn.
Today, we finished our second day of the full school hour, 7:20 to 2:20 at high school, 8:05 to 3:05 at middle school, elementary tier two from 8:30 to 3:16, and elementary tier three from 9:15 to 4:01. We are excited to be able to get through day two and we look forward to continuing on to day three tomorrow with a new group coming in. That is our bridge to turning it over to Mr. Walker and moving us forward.
Thank you, Mr. Keever. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. This data on the chart represents the percentages and actual numbers of students physically returning onsite for learning at each level. These numbers are particularly important in the planning process for a school division to safely return students and staff while adhering to evolving and updated recommendations and guidance from the CDC, Virginia Department of Health, and the Virginia Department of Education. You will note that we have 77% of elementary students, or 3,495, returning onsite for learning. I won't belabor this slide because you just recently saw this model, but the importance of layered prevention strategies. Social distancing to the greatest extent possible has been challenging for school communities across our country when reopening schools, whether it be three feet or six feet. Social distancing impacts all daily operations and logistics across the division in all schools and all classrooms. Physical distancing and wearing face coverings are necessary mitigation strategies in schools, but there are times when face coverings are not worn, such as while eating and drinking. Less distance, such as three feet, is now acceptable if necessary for the school to continue in-person instruction, but also combined with all those other mitigation strategies. As you can see in the picture, one additional layer of mitigation is the usage of individual desk shields or barriers in all nine elementary schools, as well as shields for small group instruction with the classroom teacher. As we return 77% of our elementary students for onsite learning, it's important to note that classroom space and class sizes vary across our nine schools, but the layers of mitigation strategies remain constant. As shown in the graphic of 20 students in this classroom, you can see how four students are grouped together in a pod with their individual desk shield in place while also wearing a face covering to allow for at least three feet of social distancing between the desk pods of grouped students. As Dr. Heron mentioned briefly ago, currently 40 of our total elementary classrooms, or 23% of them, have high numbers of students returning for onsite learning, and the current room arrangements need some reviewing and tweaking. Therefore, our elementary schools will be examining the current layout or room arrangement of classrooms and begin using podding of student desks as a mitigation strategy in an effort to return more students back to school for onsite learning with at least three feet of social distancing between those grouped pods of student desks. In summary, the chart lists all the layers of mitigation strategies that are and will be in place for successful onsite learning in classrooms. Currently, all elementary students are eating breakfast and lunch in the classroom. However, as we have returned to our normal full day schedule for onsite learning, each school will begin exploring opportunities for some students to enjoy their lunch in the cafeteria. Here we see some Clarebird Baker students and Jamestown High School students enjoying lunch back in the cafeteria, but following at least three feet of social distancing. One cafeteria table normally seats 12 students. Put two of those together, you can seat 24 students, which is roughly equal to one elementary classroom. However, in order to adhere to the three feet of social distancing, one cafeteria table of 12 seats can only accommodate three students, meaning it takes about eight cafeteria tables for one classroom of 24 students. So you can see how challenging it is for each school to have enough space, enough tables, enough time in the day, staff to monitor and clean those cafeteria tables for every classroom in the school to eat in the cafeteria during that typical two-and-a-half-hour lunch It is our recommendation that during marking period four of this school year, Fridays continue as remote learning for most elementary students who will complete asynchronous work posted on the teacher's LMS page. Teachers and staff will continue collaborative planning throughout the week focused on meeting students' needs and planning for targeted intervention. During marking period four, and based on need, principals and school staff will extend invitations to select students who could benefit from additional small group targeted literacy or math support on Friday mornings for a brief specified time period set by the school. Schools will communicate additional details for marking period four. In addition to daily cleaning and disinfecting throughout the week and minimal students being onsite for Fridays, custodial teams will have opportunities for deeper cleaning. Designated areas in the schools on Fridays will be used for state-required assessments such as SOL testing for the 600 Virtual Academy students in grades three, four, and five. School divisions must still adhere to the federal requirements for assessing students in reading, math, and science during an established testing window, which is typically four to six weeks long. This equates to scheduling those 600 students for three different SOL tests over multiple Fridays while still adhering to all those mitigation strategies. And last, our centers teachers, art, music, PE, and so on, are now delivering live instruction for onsite Path students Monday through Thursday, and will continue, though, posting lessons and resources to their LMS pages for the 1,042 Virtual Academy students to also access. Fridays will be strategically used and are needed during this final marking period of the school year. Next, Dr. Worley will share middle school and high school information with you unless you have specific questions regarding elementary that I can answer.
Ms. Young?
I didn't hear, maybe I just zoned out, but will students still be working, be on the hybrid schedule during this period?
We are currently on a hybrid schedule. That is correct.
But I mean during the fourth marking period.
Ms. Young, we're going to make an announcement to families and to staff and work through all of the communications this Friday. And at that point, we'll give the date for moving to more days in person, and that's coming soon.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Dr. Heron, and members of the board. As Mr. Keever shared with you early, we are in the second full day of our full bell schedules with our three high schools participating in live instruction four days per week from 7:20 to 2:20 p.m. And our students in our four middle schools are participating in live instruction four days per week from 8:05 a.m. to 3:05 p.m. Students enrolled in our Virtual Academy continue to participate in remote instruction four days per week. However, they are also now following the middle school and high school bell schedules. Students attending New Horizons and Governor's School transition to their regular bell schedule this week as well, and our activity buses are up and running to support after-school activities and athletics. As a reminder, we have 1,290 middle and high school students attending the Virtual Academy for the full year. Additionally, 1,000 families across middle and high schools chose to have their children remain remote on the path schedule for the third nine weeks. We are reaching out to those families this week to give them the opportunity to return to in-person learning on our hybrid schedule for the fourth nine weeks. We are thrilled to have students back in the building and we are successfully doing so on the hybrid schedule. For now, we will continue this model as the ability to appropriately social distance in classrooms with 25 to 30 students in a room is a challenge even with three feet between each student or desk. However, we will continue to monitor our attendance, our numbers, and guidance from our local health experts as we make additional decisions about in-person learning. Throughout the presentation this evening, we heard updated information from Dr. Powell and Dr. Dolan and my colleagues, Mr. Keever and Mr. Walker, who also presented statistics on our local health data and information on the mitigation strategies we have in place to keep our students and staff safe. The ability to successfully make this happen depends on our partnership and the support of all our stakeholders, our families, our staff, and our students. We're counting on everyone to make sure our staff and students are consistently follow our strategies to minimize the spread of COVID-19 through properly wearing a mask, frequent hand washing, and social distancing. Additionally, make sure to go through our symptom checker every morning as if you are, and if you are sick, please stay home. Earlier, Mr. Keever shared information on the quarantine numbers and positive case numbers, and we are implementing our strategies well, and the majority of our quarantine situations are a result of interactions outside of school. However, when or if a student or staff member comes to school sick, the likelihood that we will have to send students or staff members home on quarantine increases due to close contact with a COVID-positive individual. Thank you for your continued reinforcement of our symptom checker and mitigation strategies. Over the remainder of the year, our secondary students will focus on student needs, our teachers will focus on needs of their students on Fridays. They will collaborate on specific interventions to support success, and the majority of time will be committed to providing intervention, remediation, and tutoring for our students. Our teachers will also offer SOL and AP bootcamps and/or review sessions. They will provide opportunities for students to get extra help, make up assignments, and complete work. Principals will also work with leadership teams, counselors, and teachers to provide intensive support for struggling seniors to facilitate on-time graduation. Additionally, our teachers will administer and proctor standardized tests on Fridays to include one day of AP paper testing and many days to support SOL testing for our 1,290 students in the Virtual Academy, and numerous opportunities for other students to make up or retake SOL exams. Overall, our teachers are committed to making connections, enhancing support, and working with students to help them transition successfully to the next school year and/or post-high school opportunities. Another way we will continue to close gaps, provide intervention, and reengage students in our school communities is through our work this summer. Our Director of Elementary Curriculum Instruction, Ms. Robin Ford, will now highlight our K-12 summer school opportunities for students.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, school board members, and Dr. Heron. Thank you for this opportunity to provide information for WJCC's summer learning plan to address learning loss for our K-12 students. We are excited to reimagine our summer program to reengage and reconnect students to relationships and learning that fuels student success. This summer's program is designed to increase the number of students served in summer school and expand the focus for teaching and learning. The summer program will be clustered on six campuses this summer. Elementary programming will occur at Clarebird Baker, JB Blatton, and James River. Middle school programs will be held at James Blair in Hornsby, and the high school summer school will take place at War Hill. As a side note, it is important to highlight that this programming is in addition to our extended year, extended school year program and the ESL language summer programming. We will focus on three essential instructional experiences for our students this summer. Elementary and middle school staff will deliver targeted, skill-based instruction with an emphasis on literacy and numeracy skills. Instruction will be delivered primarily through small group instruction that will be responsive to students' individual needs to address learning loss. High school students will have the opportunity to enroll in courses for recovery or acceleration. This year, high school recovery courses will be supplemented by teacher-led, small group instruction to address students' individual skill needs. We feel it is equally important this year to identify and plan instruction to support our students' emotional well-being. We have expanded the summer school staff to include school counselors at each site and created daily schedules that intentionally include time for social-emotional instruction to strengthen students' self-regulation and school readiness skills. Finally, we will create rigorous learning experiences for our students through enrichment opportunities. We have selected the enrichment and SEL topics to specifically support students' readiness to engage in learning in the upcoming school year. These opportunities will pique students' interests, connect them with real-world experiences, and build the skills we identify as the five Cs: critical thinking, creative thinking, collaboration, communication, and citizenship. Our goal for summer programming is to provide teaching and learning experiences that are responsive to student and staff needs. Unlike previous years in which we have relied on achievement data to select students for summer school, this year we will consider students' needs across multiple criteria, including attendance and meaningful engagement patterns, emotional well-being, and of course, academic achievement. It is our hope that most students invited to participate in summer learning will choose an onsite experience. Elementary and middle school classes will be limited to no more than 10 to 12 students per class, so students receive multiple opportunities for small group instruction targeted to their literacy and numeracy needs. In addition to offering a three-to-five-hour learning day for most students, we will offer tutoring sessions for students who need shorter intervals of specific instruction. We also know that there may be a limited number of students whose needs will thus be served through virtual instruction. Our staff are essential to our summer program, and we have started our summer school recruitment effort. Mr. Legwitz, representing Secondary Curriculum and Instruction, and I are attending each school staff meeting this month to share summer program information with our teachers and support staff. It is our hope that this year's changes to smaller class sizes and rigorous, skill-based instruction and options such as job sharing and tutoring will entice our staff to engage in summer learning experiences. I have shared an overview of the summer learning program for 2021. This chart highlights some of the key ways this summer's program has been redesigned to serve the needs of our students and address learning loss that has occurred. We are increasing the number of summer school sites to increase the number of students we serve this year. serve this year to over 1,100 students. Staff will consider numerous academic and social-emotional criteria when selecting students, with particular attention to factors that indicate or resulted in learning loss, such as high absences, lack of meaningful engagement with instruction, and achievement scores falling below grade level or course benchmarks. Teaching and learning will occur primarily through onsite, face-to-face instruction, with supports for some students provided through tutoring and virtual learning opportunities. Instruction will directly address learning loss by targeting individual students' needs for specific skill, academic skills. Social-emotional instruction will focus on ensuring our students strengthen their school readiness skills to support a successful transition to the 2122 school year. And this year, we will provide summer bus transportation for elementary, middle, and high school students. Thank you for this opportunity to share our summer plans with you.
This concludes our presentation to this evening, and we'll gladly take any questions you may have.
Ms. Ombi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Ford, in the number of 1,115 students, does that include the tutoring and the virtual, or are those opportunities, are those opportunities for additional students beyond the 1,115?
Those include the tutoring students that we hope to be able to support. It's unknown how many students may need virtual, but our numbers are based on the student-to-teacher ratios that we have developed for the purpose of developing a budget.
Okay, and then just one last question. So that, the number and the difference between the numbers served in 2019, does that, does that sufficiently represent the number of students who are at academic risk right now in terms of the percentage?
Based on the number of students at the secondary level who have been unsuccessful with some of their coursework, no, we don't, we haven't reached that number. But we are looking at, we've looked at the number of students we've served in previous year's programs and tried to increase that while maintaining a budget that we can follow not only for this year, but we want to, we're designing a program that will support our students in the following summer, because we know we'll have students who will continue to need support. So we wanted a program that was sustainable as well as supportive of our students this year.
And Ms. Ombi would say, now we will be receiving more funds from the federal government, and so as a result of that, if we don't have the numbers to meet student needs, then those numbers will go up, and we'll try to add more classrooms.
Thank you.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have several questions. I guess the first is for Dr. Worley about distancing in high school. Are you, for the classrooms that, for which three feet is a challenge, will you be podding there as well?
So we're getting some important data this week as we survey the group of almost 1,000 families that have chosen to stay remote for the third nine weeks. So we're going to collect that data and know how many are planning to return in person, and walk the classrooms with principals again and identify where there may be potential problems, and we can consider podding and spreading out as well.
I mean, because I mentioned, podding at elementary, that's one, you're in the same pod all day, but you could be in eight pods a day in high, so, six pods a day.
It is a little more challenging, but the more we can contain students in specific areas, even for example, if we had to do contact tracing in a classroom, if they're separated, you know, it's limited to the number of contacts if we can put them in smaller groups.
Thank you, I'm glad you're looking into that. Yeah, and I'd like to sort of follow up what Ms. Ombi said about summer school. If my math is correct, that's a 35% increase, which is, it's good to see you, Ms. Ford, and thank you for being here. But it's really, it's 10% of our population, and so I'm very concerned that is not enough by, by a third, maybe, I don't, but...
These are very initial numbers for planning purposes, I think, as we start to use the criteria and apply them to our students and invite students to summer school. We will give you a final number when that happens. At the moment, of course, employing teachers is going to be challenging, because they've had an incredibly challenging year as well. One of the key ways we're going to address learning is, of course, through class size and small groups in summer school, which we have had bigger, bigger sizes, class sizes before. But we will, we will make sure that students who need help will get it this summer.
And I appreciate that, and I can imagine if you put an all-call out there, then that teachers probably would just want to relax, especially if we start school, because we'll start school a little earlier, but 10% just is worrisome to me, it just, in a way...
Don't take that as the final figure, that we probably will, will end up with more. The other piece that we are doing, which Ms. Ford mentioned, is if we're given the opportunity for teachers to job-share so that they don't have to commit to the whole summer school, and that may attract more teachers in to do part of the work.
Thank you, that's very creative. A couple, a handful more questions. One, a couple, I've heard from some parents, and we heard a call today about not wanting to continue with laptops and iPads into the future, and I just wanted to ask you, that, we're at one-to-one from now on, right? So even if we're in-person, laptops and iPads are part of our reality moving forward. That's a tool, that's an instrument for learning, is that correct?
Absolutely.
And that's positive progress. About Fridays, one of the things that I've been really proud of is the fact that our nurses have been involved in the vaccination effort in our community, and it's helped not only to allow, you know, our staff to get vaccinated, but community members at large. So I'm curious if the strategy that you've outlined at the, at all levels for Fridays will allow that to continue, or what you're thinking about in terms of our nurses participating, the Friday testing and all that stuff?
Yeah, I will not really know the need, and once we've all schools, students back in the building, it's going to be more challenging to not have a nurse in every building, so we're certainly going to continue to look for ways for them to help, because that's been one, a real privilege for our nurses, who really have felt they're making such a huge difference in our community, and they are, and we're very proud of what they're doing. So we'll look at all options to make sure they can still offer help, and certainly Fridays could be one of those options.
And then the last thing, and this is a little bit off-topic, but related to this, the rest of the school year, can you just, for the sake of the public, just give everybody a sense of when you might be making, offering information about graduation for this year?
Dr. Worley, do you want to take that one?
Sure. We are finalizing opportunities for a venue, and we hope to make finalized dates and a communication for you, hopefully at the end of the week, if not the beginning of next week.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from board members? Ms. Hummel?
A couple of questions. Thanks for the presentation. Hello, Ms., Dr. Ford. So, just so that I understand, summer school, if a student is, is it voluntary, or if they are, if they failed their current, their current year, are they, are they required to do summer school in order to progress to the next?
At the elementary level, our staff will work closely with families to help them to understand how a summer learning experience could support their student as they transition to the next school year. The high school level, they'll have the opportunity to enroll in recovery courses so that they can recapture those lost credits and stay on track for graduation.
During the summer, or during the summer?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then, so, and then my other question, which is not related to summer school, but looking at the paths, we're on Path 3 now, is that correct? We're on Path 3 now?
I think the paths have become very confusing, because there's been so many changes in data and everything else, but Path 3 does have us in a hybrid model.
Okay, and then, Path 4, am I, am I sensing that we're not going to be actually getting out of Path 3, that we are, because there's no way we can get to five days a week? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, we're, obviously, we've talked a lot about Fridays today, because there's many reasons why it probably will not be a five-day week. However, we're hoping to announce at the end of this week, when we're going to the next phase of bringing students back into school four days a week. And that's coming soon, based on the research, based on the presentation tonight, based on our reading, based on the local data, and, and we feel that we can do this safely, and we'll be announcing on Friday.
Okay, but the sense of the parents calling in saying, "I want five days a week", five, that, is that, that's probably not a realistic expectation for anyone at this point.
It won't be the next step. Our next step will be four days from pre-K through 5, and probably five days of pre-K.
Five days of pre-K?
Pre-K and four days of K through 5.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Young?
Yes, thank you for your presentation this evening for summer school. I just had a question, because one of the things I noticed on here is a social-emotional skills instruction. Does that mean that we're going to have counselors and, I mean, other than teachers onboard this summer, assuming that's what that means?
Yes, ma'am. So we've had a very strong social-emotional focus for our instruction throughout the year, knowing that, you know, that's a significant need for so many of our students. And by adding counselors to our summer school programs, we really see them as having three roles: co-teaching, working side-by-side with classroom teachers to deliver skills instruction that teachers can then continue to embed in their instruction throughout the remainder of the summer school program. But also, our counselors will be available to provide small-group counseling opportunities for our students, and additionally, to work with students one-on-one, again, based on their, the needs that those students have demonstrated.
Thank you, which, I guess, which goes back to our kids being back at school on the hybrid schedule. At some point, can we be updated on to the, what has actually happened as far as kids coming back and, and some other social-emotional needs that are being presented in school?
Sure.
Any other, Mr. Dow?
I've heard that part of the challenge in allowing for a larger increase of students is attracting teachers to summer school, and we talked about pay. What I think I'm hearing is that we budgeted for summer school pay for teachers, is that accurate?
We have, we have some in the regular budget, and then we're using CARES Act funding to supplement over the next three years with the, expecting now more money with the passing of the latest federal legislation, we will be able to use more for remediation in summer school.
CARES Act money was could be my question, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from board members?
Okay, I also appreciate the presentation tonight. I share Mrs. Cook's concern about, about how many students were going to be necessary for us to serve, and are we going to actually get there? I feel like we will have a higher demand, understanding too, that it might be hard to convince our teachers to come back for summer. And so I appreciate the, the job-sharing and some of the other creative ways that we're looking to encourage our staff to, to support summer school. I don't know if there's an opportunity with, as we get to the end of the year, to, to look at more money for the teachers as, as we get to, for summer school stipends. I'm not sure if anyone's having a heart attack back there or not, but just, you know, something that we can think about to help encourage our, help encourage our staff. So I also, I, I'm, I look towards the announcement towards the end of the week. This, we are, we are continuing to make steps down our paths. We may not, may not be going fully to a Path 4 at all levels, but we might be at a 3.8, which is good. As we, as we march towards five days a week in the future, if not in August, but towards the end of this year, but certainly in August, that's, that's a step that we're, that's a path that we're, we're working towards, so I do appreciate that. Going back to what Doctors Dolan and Powell told us about masking and social distancing, and, you know, we, there's, there's more vaccines out there, people who are vaccinated, cases are going down. That's, those are all steps in the right direction, but it's, we're not over yet, and so we need to make sure that we're staying diligent as a, as a staff, as a, as a school community, and as a community at large, so I appreciate all the effort put into this presentation tonight. Any other comments from board members? Thank you, appreciate it, folks. My mouse back on. I think that takes us to 9.01, board members' comments.
Mrs. Hummel?
Thank you. I really appreciate these bi-weekly, or every other, every other week, whatever, return to learn. Are we going to have one at our next school board meeting as well? So we will, the expectation is that with every school board meeting, we're going to be having an update on the return. This is more of a question for you. Are we also going to be thinking at some point for our school board meetings to transition to a county building?
Yeah, we have, we have put thought into that. Some of the information that you've seen tonight, as far as spacing and stuff, would help us to go into certainly the county building, but I think we have scheduled through April here, but maybe it might be a different story.
Okay, I just, I just was wondering if that was anywhere on the, on the horizon for this year. We're all, you know, making progress on the vaccination anyway. Just wanted to really, really thank our presenters tonight, all of them, the school administrators, the, our guest speakers. It's been a very, a very good update, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ombi?
I just wanted to share, it's, it's almost time for spring break, and I know our students and teachers and families have been working really hard, and so that's right around the corner, and so I'm wishing everyone an opportunity to recharge and, and come back to wind down the last nine weeks of this school year.
Dr. Beers?
I just, just a couple of things. I, I very much appreciated all the presentations tonight, especially ones that dealt with the real science, not the hocus-pocus science, and I just think that was, it, it, the results are incredibly strong, and I'm confident that you'll provide it, you know, for us as we continue to bring our students back to learn. I very much support the summer school expansion. I think, I, I hope, I hope that students and parents and teachers, because we will need teachers, work here this summer, take advantage of that. Another way of getting reconnected, working in areas that students have been able to get their academic year. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
Mrs. Young?
Yes, first of all, I just wanted to thank the School Calendar Committee. I think that work is basically a long time coming, getting us back to looking at the pre-Labor Day start. I want to thank Dr. Beers for his work on that and his willingness to continue working. You might be well-needed. I also want to thank our presenters tonight. I, I do think that all along, ever since March 12th of last year, the science has been followed here by, by our school division, and I want to thank Dr. Heron for that. I think my, I don't know if this would be in terms of a question, or, but if we are able to go back to using another venue for our school meetings like, like the county building, would, do we believe, or do we know at this point, if that would allow for in-person attendance for citizen comments? I mean, because that's a rather large area, but there's not that, I'm just, it's been a while since I've been there, but I would certainly like to see our citizens in person again as a, as a board member. again as a, as a board member.
Yeah, I agree, and that would be part of our thinking in going back to the county.
Okay, good, thank you.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to echo everyone's thanks to our presenters and to staff in particular, you know, for the budget and the return to learn presentation and all the other action items we had. There's a tremendous amount of work that goes into getting all of that ready, and I'm very grateful. I also, I'm just very pleased that we passed a budget request, and I hope that the local governments will look upon it favorably. And I really appreciated our conversation around bigger raises for teachers, and I think Mrs. Young makes a very good point, and I hope, Mr. Chair, when you draft that cover letter to transmit that over to the funders, that you might, you know, take advantage of that paper and, and let them know that we really, in the face of a new biennium budget, not calendar, really are going to be pushing raises next year, and, you know, just to sort of get that on their radar early, because I do think we need to start making a little more headway next year, and if we can get that on their radar, that'd be great.
Okay. Any else? Mr. Dow?
Yeah, nothing really, but a huge thank you to our Doctors Dolan and Powell for staying with us and being our resident experts, staying on top of the data, and the research has been invaluable. So thank you to them and to staff as well, Mr. Keever, especially you, and for these slides, these presentations that you put together, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. So I don't really have anything to add to what my colleagues have mentioned to date. I appreciate Mrs. O'Nby bringing up spring break, but tomorrow is St. Patrick's Day, which I think is noteworthy, as a, as a bit of an Irishman myself. Couple of, couple of things I'd like to just make sure we reiterate is masking, you know, COVID is not over, vaccines are good, cases are in the right direction, but we still have to do the right things as a community to make sure that stays that way. I think one thing which is, which has run through all of this since March 13th of last year is the excellent work of our staff and our superintendent in guiding us, guiding our students through this, bringing information to us. It takes an awful lot of work, an awful lot of creative thinking. There's been a lot of new thinking that we couldn't have imagined a year ago that has gone into delivering education. And I also want to acknowledge to our teachers and to our students that education is continuing, that people are learning. It's not without challenges, I understand, it's not, you know, any, any paradigm for delivering education doesn't meet everyone's needs necessarily, but we're doing the best we can, and I appreciate the work of our teachers and our students and our parents in working through those issues, and I also appreciate our staff and our superintendent for the leadership that they have provided. I think we're a very lucky community to have, have those folks on board. One last thing I'd like for our board members, we need to start thinking about a board retreat, and so if there are topics that, or things that we think that we should discuss, if you could send those to me, I would appreciate that. With that, we move down to upcoming events, and this is where people correct me, so please, please send those in. School Liaison Committee meeting, March 18th at 8 o'clock, will be virtual. Policy Committee, March 18th at 8:30, also virtual. Student Advisory Council meets on April 14th at 3 o'clock. Virtual Policy Committee meeting, April 15th at 8:30 PM, virtual, at PM or AM? It looks like that should be AM on April 15th. Special Education Advisor Committee, April 15th at 6:30 PM, virtual. Our next meeting, April 13th at 6 o'clock here in Room 300, followed by a work session at 6:30, and April 20th at 6 o'clock, closed session here in Room 300, followed by a regular meeting on April 20th at 6:30. With that, without objection, we adjourned.